Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. This is a regular meeting of the Tuckahoe Board of Education. Can I have a motion to? We're going to go to executive session. Can I have a motion to go to executive session? Lou, second. Joel, all in favor? Okay, we'll be back around seven thirty. Thank you. We just returned from executive session. We had opened up the meeting earlier. First order of business is Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag in the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the first order of business is school board recognition.
Okay. Excuse me.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. So tonight, I have the distinct privilege and honor of recognizing a truly exceptional group of individuals, our dedicated Tuckahoe Board of Education, in celebration of the New York State School Board Recognition Week. Each year this time, we pause to acknowledge and thank the dedicated volunteers who serve as trustees of our public schools. But the truth is, their work deserves recognition each and every day. Being a school board member is a call to civic duty and a call to serving one's community. Serving as a public education school board member takes one of the most important citizenship responsibilities, overseeing the education of the community's youth. Boards of education guide their local school systems and ensure public schools are flexible, responsive, and meet the needs of the school community. School boards are composed of volunteers who do not receive any sort of compensation for their services. NISBA, which is the New York State School Boards Association, conducted a recent study and showed that the average school board member who volunteers in excess of six-plus hours a week, I can tell you firsthand, our school board here at Tuckahoe does many more hours than that. They're individuals within the community, our school board members, who dedicate their time to improving public education. In New York State, we have six hundred and eighty-seven school districts that have elected Board of Educations, leading the way for public education. School board members statewide collectively oversee nearly two-point million, two-point-two million K through twelve students and oversee a budgets, budgets of eighty-six-point-three billion dollars in spending each year. With schoolchildren, their primary focus as trustees and school board members is to create a shared vision for the future of education, set the direction of the school district to achieve the highest student performance, provide accountability to student achievement results, develop a budget and present it to our community, align district resources to improve achievement, support a healthy school district culture in which to work and to learn, and much more. Our school, our Board of Education members are not only leaders, they're tireless advocates, problem solvers, decision makers, and stewards of public trust. They volunteer countless hours attending meetings, reviewing policies, analyzing budgets, engaging with the community, and making decisions that directly impact the future of our students and the schools here at Tuckahoe. Their leadership is driven by shared commitment to excellence in education, equity for all students, and the belief that public education is the foundation of a strong, vibrant community which we have here in Tuckahoe. What many may not see is the time and energy that goes into this role behind the scenes. Trustees are often the first to be called upon in moments of challenge and sometimes the last to be thanked when things are going well, yet they continue to serve with integrity, thoughtfulness, and compassion for the benefit of our students. So tonight, on behalf of our district's leadership team, our faculty and our staff, our teachers and our students and families, and truly the entire Tuckahoe community, I want to express our sincere gratitude to all of you. To our trustees, thank you for your unwavering leadership, your deep sense of responsibility, and your passion for public education. Your volunteerism shapes not only the success of our schools, but the strength of our entire community. Thank you Board President Allison Halloran, Vice President Scott Bagetti, Trustee Peter Casten, Trustee Louis Campano, and Trustee Joel Abrams. Please join me in giving them a wonderful round of applause and recognition they so deeply deserve. And the highlight of our, like, my comments and presentation to school board comes from some of our student leaders. I'd like to invite Senior Class President Ryan Gentry and his colleagues to join me at the microphone, and he's going to present some words to the board on the recognition week. Mr. Gentry.
Hello, everybody. My name is Ryan Gentry, and I'm the president of the class of two thousand and twenty-six. I am joined by our other elected representatives, the class two thousand and twenty-six, Kyle Carney, our vice president, Tyler Pion, our secretary, and Andrew Goddard is our treasurer, but he wasn't able to make it tonight. On behalf of the senior class, we'd like to take a moment to recognize our Board of Education during Board of Recognition Week. As the elected senior class officers, students who have been part of the district since kindergarten, it's incredible to look back and see how far we've come. From our first days in elementary school to now, in our final years as seniors, we've experienced countless opportunities that have helped us grow as students, teammates, leaders, and members of this community. These opportunities didn't just happen by chance, they're the result of the dedication and vision of our Board of Education, who continually work to ensure that Tuckahoe students have access to exceptional programs, events, and learning experiences. Of course, none of this would be possible without the teachers, coaches, staff, and administration who guide, supervise, and support us every step of the way. This past week's Homecoming in Spirit Week was a perfect example of what makes our district so special, a community that celebrates pride, unity, and tiger spirit in everything we do. So on behalf of the class of two thousand and twenty-six, thank you to our Board of Education, our administration, and all the staff who make Tuckahoe such a remarkable place to learn and grow. As a small token of our appreciation, we would like to present the trustees with a few items. Thank you.
You guys are why we do this every day. Watching especially seniors move on to their next step and be successful is what drives us to volunteer the countless hours that we do. I really appreciate what you guys had to say. Thank you. Thank you for the gifts, and thank you for everything that you had to say.
Thank you to all three.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
You can go home and study now. So you're gonna go home. Thank you.
Look at some of those football.
And just before we move on to our next step, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge our new board member up at the board, our student ex officio, our ex officio student board member, Kai Rogers. Kai is a standout leader both on and off the field, a three-sport varsity captain in tennis, basketball, and softball. She exemplifies dedication, teamwork, and excellence. Beyond athletics, Kai serves as president of the GO and SLIT president, and she has been inducted into both the National Honor Society and Spanish Honor Society, testaments to her academic achievement and commitment to service. Kai's impact is felt throughout the school community as an active member of the Fuller Center Club, Images Magazine, and Varsity Club. Outside of school, she shows the same responsibility and care through her work as a babysitter, demonstrating leadership and compassion in all that she does. We look forward to the energy, passion, and vision Kai will bring with her role as ex officio student board member. Welcome and thank you, Kai.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is our independent auditors' report.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me? Perfect. My name is Michael Connolly. I'm a manager with the Bonnadeo Group, and I'm here to present the recently completed financial statement audit. I first want to start off by apologizing. Kyleen, the principal couldn't be here. It's the time of year. We have five board meetings today, so we're kind of spread out throughout the state. So I just wanted to apologize on her behalf for her not being here today. So I'm gonna do a brief overview of the financial statement. We did an in-depth, detailed overview with the audit committee, so this is gonna be more of a high level, but that doesn't mean you can't ask questions, so feel free if there's any questions to ask afterwards. So there were three deliverables. There's the required communication letter, there's the financial statements, and the extra classroom financial statements. The only thing I'm gonna touch upon in the required communication letter is that this year it mentioned that the district implemented Gatsby one-oh-one, which is a change in how compensated absences is recorded. It's a new standard that all governments are required to implement this year. It was a lot of work with Biata and the business office to get to the same spot, but we needed to go through the processes to get there. Everything else on the required communication letter is gonna be consistent from prior years. So going into the financial statements, the first thing I want to note is the independent auditors' report. This is where we note that we are providing the district with an unmodified opinion. This is our highest level of assurance. The independent auditors' report also notes that the district's or management's responsibility is for the fair presentation of the financial statements, while our responsibility as auditors is to give an opinion on those statements, as well as to obtain sufficient audit evidence to support our opinion. Then going on to the back of the financial statements, there's another report from us, that's the Government Auditing Standards Report. This report, we note that we are required to gain an understanding of internal controls over financial reporting to determine if there's any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, of which there were none. We are also required to note that we looked at grant contracts, laws, compliance, things like that, that if they weren't following the rules and regulations could materially impact the financial statements. Again, we did not note any, so all good news there, and consistent with prior years. The financial highlights that I like to touch upon, and again, we went over a lot more in depth in the board meeting, so there's just quick financial highlights, is that the ending fund balance for all the funds, so general fund had ending fund balance of sixteen-point-two million, capital project had a negative fund balance of eleven-point-four million. That's mainly due to the bands. Special aid had zero. That's consistent with most governments. You expect the special aid revenues equal expenditure, so you don't end up having anything there. Lunch had a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Miscellaneous special revenue, which is scholarships and extra classroom, had an ending balance of two-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand, and then the debt service fund had an ending fund balance of three-hundred-and-fourteen thousand. Then going on quickly to the extra classroom report, here we note that we also are providing an unmodified opinion, which again is our highest level of assurance, and that ending fund balance in the extra classroom activities was eighty-two thousand. So I know that was a quick overview, but if there's any questions, feel free to ask anything.
Is the first I'm seeing this, so I have to digest this. If I have any questions, there's a lot.
Oh, yeah, the statements are massive. What we always like to recommend is if you don't want to read the whole set of financial statements, the M D N A, I don't remember the exact page, I think it's like four or five is where it starts, it's about ten pages. That's Management Discussion Analysis. That's gonna give you a brief overview of all the financial statements, whereas once you get into the footnotes on page around twenty-something, that gives you a lot more in-depth information on each specific number. So the M D N A is a good spot to just read and skim to get a good information of what really is going on in the district.
I know you mentioned there was no findings. Any recommendations?
We always get that question. For our perspective, we only can give really information on the financial statements, and if they're fairly presented. We don't want to give any specific information or not information, but recommendations on how to manage, because then we're going into management, which is impairing our independence.
Okay.
Can I just say something? So the, the negative, the negative fund balance in the capital fund is normal because we have not issued our long-term debt. We're still in short-term financing, so while it sounds on the face, you know, that we have a huge deficit, it's only because we are still in short-term financing and we have not issued our long-term bonds. So once those are issued, that will correct the deficit in that fund.
Right. Got it.
Does anybody else have questions? I have a couple. You okay? Yep, okay. I have a couple of questions. So I was gonna ask about governance, but Pete just did it, and so you don't have any suggestions? You feel that our governance is, we're doing everything properly that we're supposed to be doing? Okay. And how do you feel our budgeting, is our budgeting appropriate for a district our size? Is there anything we should be doing differently there?
So when it comes to the audit, we're not necessarily giving an opinion on the budget, but we do look at the budget and compare it, like, budget to actuals. There's, I again, don't know, I can check on my computer really quick, but there's a budget-to-actual schedule in the back that compares budgeted revenues to actual revenues, budget expenditures to actual expenditures. Overall, I think you are pretty in line with your budget. You ended up at where you were around expected, so overall, I do think the, the school is doing a good job with their budget.
Okay. And how about our reserve accounts? Do you, how do we compare to school districts?
Yeah, I would say you compare pretty reasonably to all your other school districts around the same size. You don't, you, you expect that schools would have similar reserve sizes, because you don't want to not have money set aside for if something happened. Like, for example, I won't say the school name, but a few years ago, there was a school that had something happen in the summer, caused a massive capital project that required to happen. It's multi-million dollars. They had money set aside in the reserve, so they were able to get that going right away, and they didn't have to go out to long-term debt to be able to finance that.
Can I just ask a question about reserves? Because you're just getting on topic. So on the reserves, there are, there is a recommended or even maybe statutory limit on how much we can have in a reserve fund, right? Each fund?
Yeah, each reserve has a different requirement.
Are we, are we, are we, we haven't exceeded any of those amounts?
No, you have now. We do test to make sure. I don't remember offhand if you're close to them, or I don't think so, but we do test to verify.
We're below the limits on all reserve accounts.
Yes.
Yep. Thank you.
That's all the questions that I had. Do anybody else? Anything else?
No.
Okay. So, and no management letter comments?
Nope, no, no comments.
Okay.
Especially with extra classroom, which is a good thing, because most of our districts do have comments with extra classroom.
Can I, can I say one more thing? I'm sorry. To touch on that, I want to point out that the auditors really commended our extra classroom activity from procedures, and I want to thank the business office, the advisors. It's, we are really good, and our procedures are absolutely fantastic. So I just, everyone involved in extra classroom, I know it's a lot, and when the auditors come, it's a lot for the staff, but, you know, we're doing a good job. They, they pointed it out, so.
Yeah, they, they probably get annoyed with us, because we do drill into the extra classroom, because we're required to, but compared to other districts, your extra classroom is a lot better in that you don't have management letter comments every year for the extra classrooms, which is always a good thing to not have that.
Okay. So you feel like we are an appropriately healthy district?
Yes.
Okay. And our fund balance, that's in line with where we're supposed to be?
Yep, you are, I think, right at the four percent unassigned reserve, which is at the end of the statements, there is a table showing, because New York State requires that unassigned fund balance can't be more than four percent of your next year's expenditure budget, and you are right at the four percent.
Okay.
Which is consistent, a lot of schools have it at the, around the four percent.
Okay. Great. All right, that's all, that's all the questions I have. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you very much, Michael.
And I just forgot, I want to thank Biata and the business office. They do a great job, and without their help, an audit is a huge lift, and we really appreciate their help. So I just wanted to make sure I said that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Biata.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job, Faith and Biata, for all of your hard work over the summer and throughout the year for making sure that our district stays financially stable.
That was like your report card, right? It's like your report card. It passed, all A's.
Next up is the superintendent goals for twenty-five, for the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six presentation. Do you want us to flip, so we can see your presentation?
Are we in the way, Gary? Can, we're in the way, right?
Yeah, we're in the way? Okay.
All right. Thank you to the board for allowing me to present my superintendent goals for the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six school year. Obviously, coming in this current year, July first, and getting to know the district, that's been a lot of my priority, so it was good to really take the first two months over the summer, and now the first one at the school, to really get a full understanding of some of the, the needs, some of the initiatives that I think will really help move the district forward. Really excited to begin working on these initiatives collaboratively with, with our administrators, with our teachers, other staff members, and our families and community. We have some great things that I believe were in store for us this year, with everyone's collaboration and, and moving, moving the district forward in a lot of different ways. So taking a look of some of the things that we'll be focusing on, the board asked me to develop the goals and to use the SMART goal approach, making sure that all of the goals are specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-bound. And in doing so, highlighted seven areas that I want to really focus on in terms of this upcoming school year. Some of them are already underway. First and foremost, this was right out of day one, coming into the district. This was one of the board's main priorities as well, and continues to be, and that's really the successful negotiation of all collective bargaining agreements. We'll get on to that slide in a second. Number two, the district's long-range strategic plan that had expired, was supposed to be updated last year. Some different transitions occurred, they weren't, the district wasn't able to get into that process to the level they wanted to, so excited to, to pick that up this year. We're gonna be, number three, the goal is updating the district's five-year facilities plan. Four, number four is the K-12 curriculum mapping initiative that we're starting to begin with all of our teachers here at middle, high school, and as well as at Cottle. The superintendent's goal of just becoming and really maintaining visibility, building relationships in all of our buildings and with all stakeholders throughout the community. That's an ongoing goal that started over the summer and want to continue with fidelity this entire school year. Number six, continue to develop the administrative team. We have a strong administrative team. We're gonna be looking to further develop that team's capacity, looking at professional development. We all want to engage in, myself included, so that we can sharpen our saw to be our best selves for our, our leadership teams, and also to support the teachers moving forward. And again, with, with the end goal of supporting student learning for the district. And last goal, number seven, is enhancing the district communications. We're moving forward with implementing a new district website platform, which I'll get into in a little bit. So as I talked about, making all the goals specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-bound. So the first one is, is again, the board's top priority, and coming as new superintendent, really highlighting that all of our three bargaining units had, their contracts expired on June thirtieth of last year, so it's been a priority of the board. Some more work happened with some units last year, prior to, beginning in February, March, April, May, leading to, but as of July first, we still didn't have any of our units that had settled contracts, so this is gonna be a main priority and continues to be for myself and the board this year, beginning with our teachers' unit, which is currently in negotiations, and then we also have our administrative unit and the CSCA, Local One Thousand, also to come up to negotiations this year. Again, we're, we've been negotiating with the teachers' unit for, for some time, the previous months, and then we're currently in a spot now in mediation, and we're looking to move forward as, as quickly as possible for all of our staff, ensuring that we have fair, equitable, and fully responsible contracts for all district employees, for the Board of Education, and the residents of the Tuckahoe community. Next one's the district long-range strategic plan. One of my primary goals this year is to lead the district steering team and to update Tuckahoe's long-range strategic plan. This initiative will include stakeholder engagement, data analysis, and structured planning sessions to ensure our district continues to move forward strategically and collaboratively. Our target is to deliver a comprehensive, board-approved, updated strategic plan, put by July, August, just because of, again, giving a little extra time for additional collaboration. That would be the date we'd want to get it approved. If we're able to do and accomplish that sooner, that would be wonderful for two thousand and twenty-six, and that reflects our, our shared commitment to the excellence, excellence in education, equity, and continuous improvement of our students that we want to see. This is really the nuts and bolts of what we're gonna be doing as a district, really defining all of the outcomes we want for our students, creating metrics. So as we look at our courses, we look at the, the curriculum, all of those, enhancing them through the strategic plan, and, and setting those outcomes for the experience for students that we want to see for all of our, all of our students here at Tuckahoe. This, this group also, again, we're gonna dig deep into looking at areas of need for the district. Where do we have strengths, and where are some areas that we want to improve in? Again, we, our responsibility is to meet the needs of all students. So when we look at a comprehensive system, we have to provide enrichment for, for students, and we also have to provide support for students with, with remedial needs. And how do we do that? And make sure that our system can adapt for both, and make sure that we're monitoring data, and our, and our strategic plan, that moving target may, may change as we look at different outcomes that we want to see. The upcoming changes of the portrait of a graduate will be part of this development of our strategic team, the steering team, and setting those outcomes for the future for all of our students. Moving forward with the district's five-year facility plan, again, also very important. We, in terms of when you have a healthy fiscal plan, you want to make sure that your academic plan with your strategic plan, as well as your facilities plan coincide. We need to make sure that all of our school buildings, the beautiful buildings that we're here today, they have a lot of needs. We gotta make sure that we continue to update them with cutting-edge technology, the infrastructure that'll support student learning. If you look at this library, it's, it's a sample of what we want to make sure that exists for all of our students, flexible furniture, technology integrated within. Make sure that we're continually to refine all of our facilities, and we'll do this through a very strategic process, where we're gonna do a building condition survey involving different stakeholders, our facilities team, making sure that we make the recommendations, and then planning for the future. We prioritize the different needs, working with Ms. Sparks and the business office, the committee, identifying what are the major projects that we have to put into capital projects, what are some long-term projects that we want to see down the line, if we want to eventually recommend a bond for the community, depending upon the various needs that we identify. All of these different needs will get worked through with our various stakeholders, working with principals at each building, safety teams. We'll have to prioritize all these needs, and then be able to recommend the five-year facilities plan for the district. These are required to be updated, as well as the building condition survey submitted to State Education Department. And again, this helps for the, for the board to have long-range planning, when we have to prioritize needs and wants, and obviously, we're gonna look at health and safety first, but also, again, what are the outcomes that we want for our students and the facilities that we'll need to make sure that we can support those, whether it's cutting-edge science labs, whether it's new athletic facilities, whether it's different curriculums to invest in, making sure that we have the funding and the resources to do it in the facilities and in the academic lens. The curriculum mapping. So this initiative, we've, we've started and begun, some initial conversations with the administrative team. We're starting to bring in our instructional staff into these discussions. We've decided to move forward with curriculum mapping using the Atlas software. This is gonna be a very important initiative for the district. From what we've seen and through discussions with the administrative team and teachers, we have wonderful curriculum that exists in our district. We want to be able to make sure that we can highlight it and broadcast it for everyone to see. That's one of our goals in, in curriculum alignment. So curriculum mapping will allow us to do that, especially in a small district where we have multiple teachers that teach many courses, and those may change from year to year based upon student enrollment and needs. Having a really well-defined, articulated curriculum aligned with state standards, and making sure that we can display that to the community. As I get to one of the last slides, it's about putting, having a new website, so we're also looking at broadcasting the curriculum mapping, not only as an internal resource for ourselves, but also to engage the community, so that our families can see the curriculum at every grade level, be aware of the resources, be, be involved in the learning. So if you're a new parent to the district, or you're a current parent, you can look on the website and see what my second grader is learning this year, the different learning outcomes, the different types of resources, and where's the full journey from start of the year to end of the year, along with pacing guides. Not everything will be included onto a curriculum map for the outside, for the public, but obviously, it's a good guide for, for families to know what the curriculum is about at each grade level, what's the next year's learning look like, how everything connects, and I think in aligning this with all of our instructional staff, K through twelve is an important initiative. Previously, it did occur here at Tuckahoe, I believe in two thousand and nineteen was the last time, and then the district kind of, again, COVID moved away from this, so updating these new curriculum maps, tie them to the So updating these new curriculum maps, tie them to the next-generation learning standards, and really updating our instructional pedagogy so that it's really articulated, so that every staff member is aware, every department knows the connectivity from each learning Number five is an important goal, so talk about this, building relationships with all stakeholders. The first few months, one of my journeys as new superintendent has really been to be visible, trying to make it to many events, supporting our students, being very visible in the community, being out at the arrival dismissal times, even today, welcoming Cottle students when they came in with their mystery boxes was a joy. But now, it's really getting into more personal relationships, getting into professional meetings for myself, making sure that I'm able to sit into the RTI meetings or the MTSS meetings to really understand how the systems and structures work here within our district, becoming fully informed, not just at a surface level, but really where at the intimate level of where the curriculum is, where our supports are, understanding schedules. And you do that by meeting with groups of people, meeting with teachers, meeting with grade-level teams. Those will be things that'll be forthcoming. I went to Cottle last week and really just asked the staff and said, you know, I'm going to be coming around with the principals on learning walks. It's going to be helpful for me when we talk about adopting a new curriculum, when we have resources that we're going to be recommending for the board about reading programs, to be fully informed about what we use, how we use it, what's well, how does our data support those things, and that's through rich conversations with our teachers, with our administrators, and this is something that I'm very excited with, and as well with just being at different events where we're supporting our students in different ways, really getting the feel of the school community here at Tuckahoe, and enjoying our students and getting to know all of our staff in a much more personalized level. Six is the development of administrative leadership team. We have a great team. We brought in excellent administrative staff with Mr. Fiore, Ms. Deutch, the Special Education Director, in conjunction with our current staff, where we have Mr. Debalas, Mr. Colasano, Mr. Marash, and Mr. Kilgawen, so really bringing our team together in conjunction with Ms. Sparks, myself. What is the professional development that we can use as a team? Right now, we're going to be doing professional development with Atlas, so that we can help lead that curriculum development charge, and inform teachers, be partners with them as we try to look at the maps, look at how they can be used effectively, any of the refinement of those maps, as well as other professional development that we may look to secure through leadership, whether through observations, Danielson training, different ways to become instructional leaders, and then so that we're all sharing a shared vision from an instructional lens, through communication and other, and that we're working succinctly as a team. So that's an ongoing process. Professional development never stops. That's something that will continue as a team this year, next year, and into the future. And education's a profession that, if you sit down and you sit on your laurels and you don't progress, then things pass you by. So we have to remain current, and so as a team, we're going to focus on what are those cutting innovative practices that we have to become informed on, and make sure that we're getting the professional development to stay informed, and so that we can provide turnkey training, and also partner with our teachers as they're taking on different initiatives as well. And the seventh goal, I'm glad to say, is that we've started already moving forward with some updated communication procedures, and the updating of our new website. We previously had a website that was hosted by Echoc. We're moving to a new hosting site, which is Ed Leo. There was a company takeover, so we're glad to update that process, and hopefully, our new website is a little more user-friendly. We're hoping to provide some, you know, additional ways to engage out with the community, really to make sure that it's easy for parents to find resources or find the correct links when you're looking for information. I think our current website has some growth that we can do, and hopefully, the new platform with Ed Leo provides that, as well as other features of the website, of doing a great communication tool, and housing of curriculum apps, as we talked about, other communication features that the new site has in terms of that may be better, and some push notifications that may be enhanced from our current Echoc system, so we're excited to explore those. And then we'll be sending additional communications out to the families, and once we get it up and running, but this is probably a two-to-three-month process to upload the new website, to put our personalized touches on it, and then also kind of go through and look and make sure that all of our links are live, and upload important current information in terms of that process there. So those are the seven goals that I have highlighted this year, that I think will really help to move us forward as a district, and I'm going to invest a lot of time and leadership in, and I look forward to any questions, comments, or feedback from the board.
Thank you for that presentation, Superintendent Roberts, and for all the work that you put into setting up your goals for the year. I know it's very difficult to do without a strategic plan. Usually, superintendents tend to align their goals directly to the plan, so without one, I know it's difficult, and I appreciate the thought process that you put into it. And I just want to say that I also like the way that you aligned a lot of your goals to the Board of Education goals, particularly the union negotiation settlements. As I mentioned at several times now, that is also the board's number-one priority. The communication to the community is also a board priority, so thank you for making that one of your goals also, and you've done a great job of it so far. I've seen you at every single thing that I have attended, so thank you for that. And also, obviously, the formation of the strategic plan, which is also a board goal.
And to comment on, I think the strategic plan is really going to set our vision and guidance. There'll be some, you know, thorough and good conversations about different pathways for students, where do we really hit the mark, where do we fall short, I think involving the different levels of administration, the teachers, the families into that discussion, and make recommendations to the board. It's not going to be just a cut-and-dry process where we put things on a piece of paper. I think I really want to have deliberative conversation, where we can really talk about the pathway moving forward, and really shape the district in a way that's meaningful for students. And where we have gaps, we're going to look to identify them. We have all different types of students, so are we meeting everyone's needs, and where do we fall short, and how do we find a plan to make sure we provide, you know, world-class educational opportunities for all students on the spectrum, whether they're looking for a career in college readiness, or if they're looking into trades and other different types of careers? You know, how do we make sure that we're preparing them to the best of our ability?
Yeah. One thing I do ask with the strategic plan, and it was always kind of a criticism of the previous one for me personally, is that I would like it something where it's really measurable, where we can really look and say, have we hit this goal with, like, specific ways that we've hit it? I did feel like the prior one was fake, which you need some sort of vagueness, because it needs to carry on for five years, but something where it's really, this is the priority of the district, of our stakeholders, where are we headed, and how are we hitting that specific mark, I would like to see.
I appreciate that. I think that's, in the composition of a good strategic plan, is that you set goals where, not only where you are to achieve them, but you set aspirational goals, right? And then part of our job as administration and a team eventually is how do we achieve them? So if our goal is to get to 100% proficiency in the three-through-eight grade testing, math, the LA science, where are we now? How do we then incrementally get to that level, even though it's ideally 100%, but we want to get to 70%, 80%? How do we reasonably get there? What are reasonable goals and obtainable goals, following the SMART goal concept?
Thank you. Anybody else have anything?
Just great goals, very, very good, all spot-on in terms of, you know, the needs, and like Allison said, aligning a lot with our goals. Seven is ambitious. Seven goals is a lot.
Yeah, we only asked for five, right?
You asked three to five.
Three to five. Which generally, I believe is usually better, but I think these are all appropriate goals. I think the toughest one, the hardest one's going to be strategic plan, it's the most involved. But I think the great goals, and just watching your work ethic since you've arrived, I don't have any doubt you'll get them all done, so thank you for them.
I appreciate, again, a lot of these are, it's going to be a collaborative effort with the stakeholders, but I'm confident we've got great folks that are working collaboratively, administrative team, teachers, parents, to move these forward and get to the spot that we need to.
And we've seen the website, the new website, a little bit, and it looks great. It's much more, it's user-friendly for sure compared to what we're doing right now, so it's, thank you for that. And hats off to ParentGripe, is the website, too.
Thank you for this. Great job, I think, everything you've done here, just like Allison said, it certainly does align with all of our goals, so I think that's a warm run.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Okay, up next is board comments. So we will start off with Scott.
Just to piggyback off what the 12th grade G O said about homecoming, it was a huge success. I want to thank the PTA for their involvement, our custodial staff, because that was not probably an easy cleanup, and rest assured, it was probably the busiest homecoming I've seen, our teachers, who came out on Saturday afternoon for Tucko Day to be involved in the pie contest or throwing of children's faces, and other activities and the crafts that they did. Thank you very much, our teachers who came on a Saturday to do that. And a special thank you to Mr. Colasano, AKA Mr. Seat, for all of his time and effort that he put into a four-day event for the best homecoming I've seen in the history of Tuckahoe. And I went here, and I have to say, was the way this community came together with, you know, teachers, staff, I mean, parents, I mean, there were people here that graduated, you know, 20 years ago, 30 years ago, that were in the stands, and just to see this community come together and rally, as these children said, you know, it really shows that even they see it. And I think really hats off to Andy to putting all this together, and everyone that was involved in this special day, so thank you to all, so thank you. And to Ben, obviously, for being at every game as well. Ben was here Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday for the Powderpuff, which I think is a great thing that we do for the girls to play flag football as well. I think that's a great little event, so thank you to everybody. Thank you.
Yes, and I'll piggyback off that. It was a great, great week, you know, just culminating with the Sunday game, which I unfortunately was unable to attend, but yeah, hats off to Mr. Seat. He, you know, made a tough go, there was a point where we had no lights. You know, a company backed out, you know, that's amazing that, you know, you have a contract with a company and they don't, you know, one week before the event, they, you know, say sorry. So he had his hands full, he was really, I mean, it was a one-man show. He's down, you know, a secretary, he had no one really, you know, working with him, and yet pulled off, I thought, like Scott said, a great, great weekend, weekend. So hats off to that, and for everybody that attended. Teachers with the school day were all out there. It was a great day, finally no rain, so it was a great Saturday. I was up there, I don't know what I was doing, but I was there helping with the fun run, but, you know, the kids did, you know, a great job. They organized a fun run, and it really went off without a hitch. It was a nice little turnout.
It was also nice to see how Cottle, you know, the next generation was there on, at the parade, and to see all different, you know, grades of, you know, from all the way from preschool to the seniors, you know, just the whole community really came out, and it was fantastic to see, so.
Yeah, it was definitely a special time.
You know, Ben, he's been to, you know, all the games, you know, he's only, he's going to get mad, but, you know, we had a game this past Saturday, and you could ask Ben where he was for part of the game, not his fault, but I thought it was quite necromical that he was over at Edgemont, but, you know, I'm going to be able to needle him on that for, you know, a number of months. We'll have to get him a better GPS, or better mode of transportation. But yeah, you know, I'm glad and I'm not glad to see all the teachers here. You know, it's nice to see some faces that, you know, I've worked all these years with, so I'm just hoping we can do the right thing for all you guys. Thank you.
I second and third that, I guess. Very, very successful homecoming week. Thanks again to all the teachers, the staff, administration. Highlight on Mr. Colasano, thank you, sir, for all that you do. It's incredible what you pull off. And to the PTA, to the Athletic Council, and also to Tucko Septa. For the Tucko Day, I thought that was a very successful event, and I want to congratulate all of the scholars and athletes who participated throughout that week. It was something special, so thank you.
Okay, I'm going to mimic a lot of the same comments, because homecoming really was so great. Thank you to everyone who came out, all the families in full Tuckahoe spirit, all the students and the staff for dedicating their time to it, Mr. Seat and his effort, Mr. Fiore, Mr. Roberts, everyone, just at all the events. It was a long weekend, but a really, really fun-filled one, and great to see even old staff there. It was just, it was such a great weekend. I want to give a shout-out to our varsity cheerleaders, because I thought that their routine was great and different, and I really loved it, so thank you for that. It was a lot of fun to watch that during the football halftime. Congratulations to all our team on having such a winning, all our teams for having a winning weekend, that always makes it extra special. And that's it for homecoming. I do also want to thank all the community members who have volunteered to sit on our board committees. It's a great way to participate in the district, to get further involved, and we really appreciate your support in volunteering. And we have done a lot so far this school year. The school year's off to a great start. I'm really happy with our new administration and all the, and our old administration also, and all the efforts that they're putting forward. I do want to just point out that while you may have been in Edgemont for a little bit of the game, that was not 100% your fault, it was a Blind Brook-Edgemont merger, and Superintendent Roberts certainly does not have to, is not required, to take a Saturday away from his family to attend our football games, but we do appreciate your presence there. So thank you for coming. And that's it for, that's it for me, so thank you. And now Kai, do you want to give your report?
Thank you, President Halloran. I just want to start off by thanking the board for passing the policy that allows me to be here today. I'm overjoyed with the privilege, and I don't take this for granted whatsoever, I take great pride in being the voice for my peers. For the first time speaking, I was a little nervous, so I figured I'd just start off by telling everyone a couple of things that we're excited about. Homecoming, obviously, was a success. It's a success every year. It's very hard to top. I don't know many schools that have a parade, leading you all the way through the town, so, but we are looking forward to a lot of things. I know as a senior, we're looking forward to our future opportunities, and those start here at Tuckahoe. So we are very grateful for the Guidance Office, for all the college visits that they provide us with. I mean, today, I got to talk to the Tulane representative, which is one of my top schools, and I don't know if that would have been possible without their hard work and dedication, so thank you to them. Also, being able to register to vote today, which was pretty cool, step into adulthood, I guess. Also something I don't have to do when I turn 18, so that saves me some headache. And I also know that all the students are excited about the Halloween festivities, I think mainly the Haunted House, but it's great that we get to pull together the whole Tuckahoe community, including the Cottle students, and have that. And yeah, once again, thank you for your support and allowing students to have a voice on the board, and I'm very grateful to be a part of such a dedicated community.
Thank you. Thank you. Great job. I'm still nervous, and I've been doing this for a while. Totally expected, and you did a great job. One thing that was really great was we had a policy committee meeting last week, and Kai was involved in that to give the student perspective, which we really appreciated, and we find, you know, we're really hopeful, and I think you're going to do a great job at it, that she will be the voice for the students, and always giving the student perspective to the board when we make decisions, and certainly when it comes to policy. So she was certainly valuable during that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and you are free to go if you want to, or you are free to stay. It is completely up to you. Okay? And if you choose to stay, and at some point you're like, I just want to go home, you could just also excuse yourself and go home.
Give up your own ice for tradition.
All right.
Thank you guys so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is comments from the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam President. So the first thing I'd ask, that's if the board is kind enough to pass a resolution that I don't always have to speak after Kai, because she's so articulate, so I just want to welcome Kai, and just tell you, again, my appreciation for you to be on the board is at an all-time high. I can't even tell you how proud I am of you to be up here and to speak on behalf of your classmates and students. I've been able to go and watch you on Senior Day for tennis, and as a student leader, you represent all that's good in Tuckahoe, so keep doing what you're doing, and thank you for being a student voice and advocate here, and we look forward to getting your perspective on the board for important matters. matters of the school district. So, thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
So, I'll echo the same sentiments as the board has about homecoming and my journey as well. So, I've been in six different school districts, starting as a teacher, assistant principal, principal twice, assistant superintendent now, superintendent. And I can tell you that Tucuhos homecoming, bar none, is the best I've ever seen in terms of family engagement and community feel. Each and every aspect of it was meticulously planned and done. And that's not an easy feat. And I think the other thing that I took away from that was just the way the students responded. The students showed up at every activity event, just cheering each other on, regardless of the sport or the boys, girls, doesn't matter. They were there in full force with their Tucuhos pride and just supporting each other at each and every turn. And that was amazing to see all throughout the entire week. I was also so very impressed with all the staff that embraced the entire week of the festivities. Teachers dressing up as cowboys and cowgirls and pajama days and all the interesting things. They were just making it such a festive experience for our students. The students really enjoy that, and they set the tone for what community feel is. So, thank you to all of our staff who participated in those events and made it special for our students. And then until, as I jokingly said, it was about a 17-day homecoming, but it was wonderful. And I think just being a part of those different activities from day one to the end and the closing of it, just all the families that turned out, alumni, the community, the community pride that was everywhere was amazing. And I think, you know, that speaks a lot to the investment that people have in education here at Tucuhos. They turned up. They turned up, and they show up for their students and for their community, and there's a lot to be said about that. In terms of the leadership, I can't say enough, there was countless staff members that were here 10 to 12 hours a day, supporting students, supervising, helping to coordinate, picking up areas, our custodians, teachers, security staff, everyone was here and with a smile, especially with those long hours and putting that time in, which was amazing. So, kudos to all of them and for their dedication. And to be here for our students was, without them, we couldn't put it on the way that it was. You know, and I think that's a testament to their dedication to the school district and in their positions and for our students as well. And Mr. Colasano, I agree the same sentiments. I told him this. I said, it was just the level of detail that he puts into every single turn when it came to making it special for our students, whether it's for a homecoming and the roses or the alignment and the announcement of students at every single event, the details are what matter. And that's what our students will remember. And I think if you listen to our G O. and they spoke today, what was important to them, it was those memories. They made lasting, lifelong memories this past week at every grade level, and the pride of Tucuhos ran deep. So, not to belabor the point, but it was phenomenal. And I really give kudos to Mr. Colasano. Mr. Fiore was here the entire week. So many staff were here and just enjoying it. And to all the families that came out and from the start of the parade all the way to the last end of the Powderpuff game late on Sunday, they were enjoying students and celebrating them. And that's what education is all about. So, kudos to our school community. Additionally, instructional front, just a quick update. So, we had our first, some of our first extended-day professional development meetings with our teachers at KOTL and at the middle and high school. I know that Mr. Fiore and Mr. Marash were going in through some of their expectations of what they were looking for this year, some of the presetting about curriculum maps. I believe Mr. Fiore did some data review with the staff, kind of being able to start to dive into the teaching and learning in different areas. I was able to make it for the end of the KOTL presentation and spoke to the staff briefly. Just my urge of, I want to start doing the learning walks and being in classrooms and seeing students engaging in meaningful instruction, and then having those conversations and follow-up with our teachers is what really gets me excited, just as much as homecoming, to be honest with you. So, I'm looking forward to those opportunities. And I know our administrators started to schedule their observations, so they're getting into classrooms, working with teachers. And that's where real meaningful change happens and how we start to really support all student needs. When adults start to talk about how to help students, how to look at data, how to improve instructional pedagogy, whether we need additional resources, those conversations happen from the classroom visits and from discussions with the administration, grade levels, and teachers. So, kudos to all that are barking in that professional discord. And I know, I look forward to those opportunities to get in myself and to engage with teachers moving forward. This morning, again, I said briefly, the KOTL students coming in, excited to learn. They had their mystery boxes. The assignment was bring a not-box to school, and they all came in. And the pickup line was extra long this morning. You had to stop at that. But they were, it was excited students to share what they had thought and created. And I think that level of energy at KOTL is amazing, and students coming to school happy is a beautiful thing to see as superintendent. So, I'll pause there. I've got some comments at the end. But just a great last few weeks, highlighted by the homecoming and then just the positive energy that our students are bringing and that our teachers bring every day for doing great things for our school community. That's my report, Madam President.
Thank you very much. Okay, comments from the business manager.
So, I want to take a moment to express appreciation to the Board of Education. Your dedication, thoughtful leadership, and commitment to our students and community make a meaningful difference every day. Thank you for volunteering your time, balancing so many responsibilities, and always keeping the students at the heart of every decision. I want to thank our auditors, even though they left, for their professionalism and thoroughness throughout the audit process. We value their input, expertise, and partnership in helping us maintain strong financial practices and accountability. I'd like to also extend my sincere appreciation and gratitude to our business office staff for their hard work and attention to detail, not only during the audit, but throughout the entire year. Their commitment ensures that our district operations run smoothly and effectively. We have an amazing business office. And a special shout-out to our treasurer, Beato Grabowski, who is here today. Her leadership and coordination play a critical role in facilitating the audit process and ensuring timely and accurate state reporting. Your efforts are appreciated, and this year was a particularly big haul for the audit with the implementation of the GASB 101. So, it was a big, big, big job. So, thank you.
Thank you, Faith, and thank you again for all of the work that your office did for the audit and for making sure that we had a clean opinion, and your work is appreciated. Thank you. Okay. So, now we are up to community partner comments.
Hi, everyone. I'm Sue Warne. So, I'm the president of the TUCO PTA. My thing that I will say about homecoming, and yes, it does seem to last for a really long time, but it's awesome. The Monday after, my daughter was really like, oh, my God, this week is gonna be so boring. Last week was so much fun every single day. So, I know we can't make that level of fun all the time, but I do want to say that the kids, just in every way, could really participate, and it was fantastic. I always take a video every year of the parade. I always say it's my favorite three-minute and 45-second video. It's the best. I send it to people around the country who I know, and I'm like, look at my town. Like, this is just the best. It's almost like it's a movie. You know what I mean? It's like, it's almost fake, because it's so adorable and perfect and exciting. And it's like, wait, this is where we live. So, you know, I grew up in White Plains, great town, had a great childhood. But living in Tucuhos, it is such a gem. Like, the fact that this is what we experience in Westchester, I just, I always try to tell people how lucky we are. So, if you, like, stumbled here by accident, like, you really got lucky. So, the other thing I want to say about homecoming and thanking Mr. Colasuno, what I love about him is that he does all of that. And like, he never seems stressed, so even keeled. I think that is why people don't always realize how much goes into it. I also want to give a shout-out to the Tucuhos Athletic Council. I feel like they have become a well-oiled machine, and it is definitely a testament to all of their partnership with Mr. Seay to make this such a great event. And I do want to also mention, when I was proud with the PTA, we had our environment and sustainability there, that committee, and they did the costume swap. And we got lots of costumes donated. A lot of people took costumes. So, that's the second year we've done that, and it's terrific, because then, you know, you don't, you don't want to spend a lot of money on costumes, and so you can just get one. We did have a little bit of a surplus, which the committee is actually gonna be dropping off to E Cap this week. So, the gift keeps on giving, which is great. And I do want to also say that I loved having SEPTA there. I felt like what I loved about all of Tucuhos Day was how it did come together. The cheer team selling their merch, you know, environment and sustainability, the SEPTA table with everybody doing a craft. Like, I felt like everybody was represented, and that's what was really fun about it, too. The fun run by the cross-county, cross-country team. So, just in general, you know, of course, we've all said so much about it. But again, I really think that most other towns cannot say all the things that we have said tonight, and so I'm really proud of us. Moving on, I want to mention, I want to make sure everybody knows, our Parent and Teacher Night Out is this Thursday at Broken Bow Brewery. Very casual, inexpensive to attend. I want to thank Mr. Fiore and Mr. Marash for a lot of raffle items that they agreed to donate, things like the VIP seats for plays and for, you know, strings concert, band concerts, things like that. We have like a fast pass for the Halloween, for the Haunted House. So, a lot of kind of like really priceless raffle items. So, I'm hoping that people will stop by on Thursday. If you're not a member yet, there's a non-member price that actually bundles in membership. So, you will become a member of the PTA if you stop by the Parent and Teachers Night Out on Thursday. Friday night, we have our KOTL Halloween party, and I'm thanking Kai for mentioning the opportunity to volunteer there. The high school kids and middle school kids as well, but especially high school kids, it will be face painting and helping out in the sensory room, the craft room, et cetera. So, we do still have some more slots for the high school kids. We also have some more slots for parents to help us out as like sort of security floaters. I kind of want more people, you know, milling around. Can't be too safe. So, if you are interested in either attending the Halloween party or volunteering with us, just go to tucuhopta.com. You'll see all the information there, as well as for Parent and Teachers Night Out. Want to mention, next week on Thursday, the 23rd, is a parent workshop. It's part of the JCK Foundation visit that the kids are gonna experience an SEL workshop, as well as the faculty. And the parent component of it is an evening workshop right here, given by the JCK Foundation about how to help your child tween or teen through their mental health journey. So, really important workshop. So, I'm encouraging everybody, you know, all parents of middle school and high school students. But honestly, even if you're like a fifth-grade parent, it's not barred to any parent, and it's really good programming by this organization. So, I encourage people to RSVP for that. I want to acknowledge the board. Happy Board of Education Recognition Week. The PTA did make a donation to thank you all for your service. I thank you back for donating it back to us, to our grants program. Our grants team is in the middle of reviewing the grant requests, which of course are all so good that you're like, what are we gonna do here? You know, we're trying to figure out how we can say yes to everybody. I don't know that we can. We got a lot of great, a lot of requests, but we'll do our best. But anyway, I think that's everything for tonight. So, just remember, Parent and Teachers Night Out this week, Halloween party this Friday, and then the JCK Foundation Parent Workshop next Thursday night. And again, tucuhopta.com was where you could find everything. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you so much for the donation also, in recognition of our work. It's greatly appreciated, and we are very happy to donate it back to the PTA to put towards the grants, because that is what our teachers ask for, so that they can provide programs outside of district funding. And we really appreciate everything that you do. Have fun with the KOTL Halloween party. Such a huge undertaking. Your baby should have done Parents Night Out after, so that you could...
Yeah, I understand. I probably thought I put tomorrow. But they insisted they wanted it this, so...
So, I am looking forward to Parents Night Out. Thank you for doing it and for all of the work that your organization does. Our Tucuhos PTA is the best. I'm just gonna continue saying that. Thank you. Anybody from Athletic Council or SEPTA? No? Okay. Thank you to the Athletic Council for all of the work that you also did for homecoming. It was, there was a lot that you guys, you know, the concession stands and the banners, all of it. You know, you really have done a lot for this community as well. And I do encourage everyone to please become a member of PTA, the new SEPTA PTA also, and the Athletic Council. All three contribute an enormous amount to this community. Thanks. Okay. Now we are up to first recognition of the audience. As a reminder, this is for agenda items only. There is a three-minute time limit on your comments. And when you stand up, please state your name and your address. Anybody for first recognition regarding the agenda items?
I'm Lori Gerald. 15 Wallace. Hi, everyone. I just wanted to really come up and thank Faith and her team for just the awesome job that that office does in making sure that we're fiscally sound, that we are meeting the needs of our students and faculty. I think they work so hard, and we really don't get it, but I get it, having served on the board. So, I know firsthand the hard work that you do. And what a great report card you got. Straight A's. Also, I wanted to just say that the, you know, I agree with everything with the homecoming. It was wonderful. McKenna came home just happy and wanted to hurry up and do a quick change, shower, and whatever, so she could get back out there after her game. So, that was a lot. And then, finally, I just wanted to just talk a little bit about, I know that we have negotiations coming up for our teachers and our power professionals. And I just want to strongly encourage that we do whatever we can to secure great budgets and contracts for our teachers. We have awesome teachers here, and they work really hard. There's no teacher up there besides former teacher superintendent, having been one as an educator. It is so important that we continue to support them. That's been huge in this district, and I've definitely been an advocate for our teachers. And I want to make sure that their needs are met as well, because when they're happy, then our little sweetie babies are happy, right? The little ones and the big ones. So, just do whatever we can to make them happy. I think teachers, in fact, I know, it's not even I think, I know the kind of work that they put into what they do, often unrecognized in the sense that they go home after their hours, work hard, after they're off the clock, technically, not getting paid for that, but they put in, they buy for the classroom, they do, they just go over and beyond. And our district has benefited in most recent years by their dedication and hard work. So, let's just make sure we get that contract done and that they're happy, so that we can keep our great teachers. I'm their number-one fan.
Thank you, Mrs. Gerald. Just so that you know, we all appreciate our teachers. And as, while I'm not an educator, I do work in a school, and my mother was a teacher for 40 years, and my sister is a teacher. My love for teachers is immense. So, yes. Well, all, actually. All teachers. They deserve our respect. So, please do not think that this is anything out of lack of respect. Okay. Next is approve a consent agenda. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tucuhos Union Preschool District motions to approve consent agenda items two and three. Do I have a motion? Who is that? Pete? Second? Joel? All in favor? Okay. Business of the board. Accept independent auditor's report. Resolve that the Board of Education accepts the district's independent auditor's report for June 30th, 2025. Do I have a motion? Pete? Second? Lou? Any discussion? All in favor? Approve an agreement. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tucuhos Union Preschool District, on recommendation of the superintendent, hereby approves the agreement dated September 18th, 2025, extending the probationary appointment of employee number 2573 to November 7th, 2026, in accordance with the terms of the said agreement. Do I have a motion? Scott? Second? Pete? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor? Approve a budget transfer. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Takahoe Unit Free School District approve the budget transfer for winter concerts. Do I have a motion? Joel? Second? Pete? Any discussion? Budget transfers can be seen in the public section of the, of Board Docs, if there's any questions. All in favor? Approve Treasurer's Report. Approve the Treasurer's Report, Revenue Report, Appropriations Report, and Budget Transfer Report. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Takahoe Unit Free School District approve the Treasurer's Report, Revenue Report, Appropriation Report, and Budget Transfer Report for the period ending July 31, 2025. Do I have a motion? Pete? Second? Second? Joel? Any discussion? All in favor? Approve extra classroom activity report. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Takahoe Unit Free School District approve the extra classroom activity reports for the period ending August 31, 2025. Do I have a motion? Lou? Second? Joel? Any discussion? All in favor? Approve an agreement. Oh, no, extra class, did I do extra classroom? I did, okay. Approve an agreement. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Takahoe Unit Free School District authorizes the district to opt into the agreement between the Town of East Chester and Bus Patrol America LLC for the installation and operation of stop-arm cameras and school buses, as well as optional internal student safety cameras, if selected by the district, bus patrol systems, and be it further resolved that the superintendent of schools or designee is authorized to take all necessary steps to execute and implement this agreement on behalf of the district. Do I have a motion? Lou? Second? Pete? Any discussion?
No, there's no charge.
All in favor? Approve an agreement. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Takahoe Unit Free School District authorizes the district to opt into the agreement between the Village of Takahoe and Bus Patrol LLC for installation, operation of stop-arm cameras on school buses, as well as optional internal safety cameras, if selected by the district, bus patrol systems, and be it further resolved that the superintendent of schools or designee is authorized to take all necessary steps to execute and implement the agreement on behalf of the district. Do I have a motion? Lou? Second? Pete? Any discussion? All in favor? Approve the cooperative purchase in contract. Resolve that in accordance with the provisions of the general municipal law, the Board of Education of the Takahoe Unit Free School District hereby approves the purchase of a video recording server in the amount of $52,692.49 as part of the district's 2023 capital project through cooperative purchasing through the Lyric with the New York State Office of General Services under contract number PT 68-783, as offered by DEO Automation. Be it further resolved that the Board of, Board authorizes the President of the Board of Education and/or the Superintendent of Schools to execute any and all documents necessary to complete the purchase and to take such other actions as may be necessary and appropriate to effectuate the resolution. Do I have a motion?
Motion?
Yeah, motion. Pete? Second? Scott? Any discussion?
Is it? Oh, good. Just to explain, this is for, we have the installation of new cameras in the server. So this is tied to the new camera system that was already approved.
So this is tied to the new camera systems, the, the additional cameras that were installed over the summer, part of what we approved to for, for work. These cameras require additional server that was approved already, so fail to let you continue, but you can get it.
Yeah, it was part of that and part of the capital bond work, where we replaced all of the cameras at Cottle and upgraded them. So it pull, it's going to pull all of our cameras onto one platform by having this server.
And this number was already included, right? And, and this number is already included into...
Yes, it was included in our capital project, yes.
So it's not like it's additional funds coming out?
No.
There's no additional funds, it was already included.
Okay, is this an on-prem server? It's here?
Yes.
Physically here?
Yes.
And this cost include the installation and configuration?
Yes.
Anything else? Okay. All in favor? Approve a donation. Resolve that the Takahoe Unit Free School District has been informed of a donation to be made to the district from the Takahoe PTA, and whereas, the district would like to accept the donation from the Takahoe PTA to support the PTA Grants Committee to help support our teachers with requests, with requests outside of district funding in the amount of $100. Do I have a motion? Joel? Second? Pete? Any discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you again, PTA. All in favor? Approve personnel recommendations. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Takahoe Unit Free School District approve personnel recommendations A through F. Do I have a motion? Pete? Second? Joel? Any comments? All in favor? All right, and now we are up to the second recognition of the audience. Again, just a reminder, three minute, three-minute time limit, and please state your name and your address.
Hello, Karen Campagnell, Middleton Place. Excuse my voice, I had a long weekend. I do want to thank the board members that volunteered this weekend to sign up for the carnival. I know we didn't get there, but we'll get you next year. And, you know, to piggyback on the Takahoe homecoming, board members, administrators like Mr. Colaswano, Mr. Fiore, they don't just donate their time here, they were donating their time also at the carnival. They came, they wanted to come, and some, many teachers, some that don't even live here, wanted to come, they signed up, they wanted to see the kids, they wanted to engage with them, they wanted to show them that they weren't just here for school, they were here as part of their community, which I thought was a wonderful thing. I want to get to a hire that was done last month. You all know what I'm talking about, I sent you an email. I did receive a response, and I wasn't comfortable with it. As part of the goals that the superintendent stated this evening, there were also other goals in place in the past couple of years with regards to special education program. There was a requirement for any ELA teacher for special education or reading teacher have a literacy certification. The teacher that was hired last month does not have that. The teacher that was hired last month just got her special education certification in July. She hasn't even taught a special education class. Why are we hiring somebody without any experience whatsoever and putting them in an eighth-grade classroom when they're going into high school? Do we really think that a teacher with zero experience is going to be able to prepare those students to go into ninth grade and high school? Anybody want to go there?
Karen, we can't really discuss personnel issues, and we also...
This board promised a policy, that policy was not followed, and I want to know why. And when asked about it last month by Trustee Bogetti, he was told that the teacher was certified, but when he was told the teacher was certified, the teacher that was being referred to was a Cottle teacher who was not even on the agenda. So why it was brought up, I don't know why. And why he was told that, I don't know why. I want to know why we diverted from a policy to hire experienced teachers.
We cannot comment on personnel matters.
It's not a personnel matter, it's, it's a policy issue. It's a policy issue. Pete, two years ago, less than two years ago, that was one of the requirements that this board said they were going to impose. Why wasn't it imposed? Why didn't this board look at her resume and say she's not qualified before you voted to approve her?
Karen, with all respect, the three minutes is up, and the board is not allowed to discuss personnel matters at the table.
Again, this is not a personnel matter, this is a policy matter. And this board was presented with a hire on the agenda...
It's discussing the policy around a specific personnel member, which we can't do in public. We could have a private conversation, but we can't...
If you wanted to have a private conversation, you should have responded to my email two weeks ago.
The email was not directed to me, we cannot have...
It was directed to you.
It was directed to the superintendent.
It was directed to you, you were the first person on the email, he was copied on the email. He chose to respond. You wanted to have a conversation, anybody here wanted to have a conversation, my phone number was on that email, somebody could have responded to me, and nobody did, except for the superintendent.
Because hiring practices are the superintendent's responsibility.
Approving those hiring practices is the board's responsibility, and you have the policies in front of you to make those decisions. So you did not follow those policies when you were making your decisions. So we're not going to get an answer. Okay?
Not in this forum.
I'm sorry?
Not in this forum.
This is a public, this is a matter that every parent that has a child in special education deserves to hear an answer to. Every parent, whether they have a child in special education or not, they deserve to know why the board is not acting right now in the best interest of their children when they're hiring teachers. We have amazing teachers, and teachers that can be placed in certain grades and certain classrooms, and they're not doing that. They're hiring new teachers without experience, and they're throwing them into the lines then, and I don't understand it.
Teacher hiring is not part of the board.
And with, as a parent with a child who has been through the wringer of the special education program in this district, I'm not letting this go. By not answering my emails or not answering my phone calls, it's not going to be the last that you hear from me, I'm not going to go away. I'm just starting, and the more you don't respond to me, the more I'm going to keep coming back. And I don't come here, I don't, I attend all the events, I love the kids here, I love the students here, I come to events that my daughter doesn't even go to. But this is not okay, and I will keep coming back until somebody answers me. And you should be answering me right now, and, and not hiding behind that this is a personnel matter, this is a policy matter. You're responsible for hiring the teachers based on the recommendations of the superintendent, and you failed to do that. Nobody, did anybody look at her resume? Anybody? Thanks for doing your job.
It's actually not, it's not the role of the board to look at teacher resumes, it's not the role of the board.
I'm sorry?
It's not the role of the board to look at teachers' resumes in that manner, we go off of the recommendation of the superintendent.
That's a response.
Hi. My name is Katie Frye, 83 North Road. I'm here as kind of a last resort. I've gone to Mr. Colaswano and Mr. Fiore, my daughter is a seventh grade student, and she did debate club last year. Debate club is no longer a part of the clubs in middle school. I've heard there's no teacher who is able to take the club, I guess because of scheduling issues, but there are a lot of kids that were really excited about this club and are being let down. So it's something that I'm really hoping that we can figure out some sort of solution as to either before school, after school, any other time that we can find someone to work with these kids, because not only did they enjoy it, they were good at it, we went against schools that were private schools, we've been against, for example, Hackley, Dalton, we went to a competition in Fieldston. These kids, you know, it really brought out their confidence. My daughter is not a very outgoing girl, and it really brought her out of her shell, and it was something she enjoyed and she was good at, and it's something that these kids need. You know, something that was said in the beginning of this meeting was equity for all students, not all kids are athletes. So there needs to be different things for different students. So I'm just really hoping that we can figure something out, so these kids are able to get this club back, so. Thank you.
Hi, Michelle Nitty, 109 Middleton Place. Just up here again to, everyone knows what I'm here for, I think you guys know, I came here last year. We did have a great homecoming, and I think we had all victories from our student athletes, from our varsity athletes, they work really, really hard, as you know, and they work really hard in school, and we really need to give them more time to do, to focus on their, their work, their homework. I've asked for Takahoe to do what every other Westchester district does, and let the varsity athletes take study hall instead of gym during this, during the seasons that they're varsity athletes. The varsity sports take a lot of time, they really do. And some of these classes that these kids are taking, AP classes starting freshman year, thanks to you guys, we really appreciate it, but they need time to do, to get these assignments done, to study, to get the great grades on the test. So I'm asking you again, and I'm disappointed it's not on the agenda that this varsity, this should have been a simple thing, everyone I talked to last year, you said it was a simple thing, Mr. Fiore said it was a simple thing, yet it's not, still not on the agenda. So again...
Yeah, we're working on it. Well, yeah, because Alice and I were, yeah.
I know, but it's, it's going very slow, I was, you know, we're already through a season now.
You know, it's hard to implement something that quickly, but there's a policy committee looking at it, you have to look at what students have, what sports, what free periods, is there lunch, what grade you start at, and that's why we have a committee looking at this, you know, so it's not just as easy, just like, okay, if you play a varsity sport, you're going to, you're not, you know, you're not taking gym anymore. So there's a lot of variables that go into it.
So how long does the policy committee need?
So we did actually meet this past week.
Okay.
When I referred to Kai being part of the policy committee, that's what we did.
Oh, great.
And we are at a point where it is not going to happen for the fall, but it, we are hopeful that's something, the actual policy won't be in place for the winter, but we are going to run a pilot program so that we can see how it affects the district, how it affects the class sizes, who's going to take advantage of it. It's going to start with, I believe, Mr. Roberts, if you could just, it's going to start with a survey that goes out, and then go from there, but it is, it is in the process of happening.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to update it when I make closing remarks at the end, but, um, yeah, so we, the policy committee did meet, we are in favor, I think everyone on the committee, the board as well, of, of looking to do something for our varsity athletes. We're looking at some of the components, different school districts have different models, some about whether it's 11th and 12th grade, some is 10th, 11th, 12th grade, so it's not all students, so we're going to look at our capacity of how do we provide the opportunities for students, and again, in certain circumstances. The next step that's going to happen is a survey, as President Halloran said, so, so that is, we're getting the numbers of students that would actually take advantage of that, how many students that are varsity athletes would want to stay in physical education, how many would take advantage of, of additional free period. And I think also the, the scope of the policy, as well as the, the intent is not to create, if a student already has a study hall in their day, we don't want them to have multiple study halls, we really want students to engage as much of a full schedule as possible, but also recognizing that students do spend a lot of time outside of the school day for, for varsity level sports. So the, the pilots proposed, just so that we can get an understanding of how many students would take advantage of this, what's the impact for us, any staffing, because if students are going to be in school for study halls, then how many staff members in, in spots do we have in our current study hall allotments do we have, so we can plan accordingly for that? So that should be coming up, the survey to families, hopefully in the next week or so, with the goal of piloting it for the winter season for varsity athletes with the particular grades. And again, more information will come with, with the high school administration, whether it's, you know, students who would need to be eligible, if they already have a study hall, or if it's the senior who has a free period, the goal is not to create two free periods in the course of the day, it's really to allow some access or relief for students who could use that extra time.
How, how long is each period?
The, I'm sorry, the...
How much, how long is each class period?
Forty-five minutes.
Okay, so forty-five minutes is usually enough time to get all your homework done if they have one study hall? Just, if they already have a study hall, they don't need another study hall, because forty-five minutes is enough time to get all your homework done? Is that correct?
Yeah, I don't, potentially not, depending on how many courses a student is taking, I think the goal of, again, for the policy is, is really, that was the intent that, as an administrative team and the policy committee, we discussed, is that we wanted to start off and really allow for some relief for students... is that we wanted to start off and really allow for some relief for students to make sure they have one study hall to kind of give some of that.
Okay, sounds good. All right, thank you. I appreciate it.
There's some, when it comes to study halls, there's some, like, as you get into the older levels, you could have potentially like a study hall and lunch built in, and then to add another study hall onto that is almost like you've had your whole morning off.
Right.
And that's where they're talking about making sure that we don't have too many study halls back to back like that.
We want students to release for three out of the eight periods of the day. So just kind of looking at what's, what's best, what's in the best interest of students to still stay engaged in the school day, you know, for certain schedules that some students may have the entire seven or eight periods blocked out, and they're doing varsity sports on top of that. So that's a great, you know, example of let's give some relief and allow that to happen. And we also think the survey may show that some of our students want to still continue to participate in physical education because they, they enjoy the subject.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. I look forward to seeing the survey.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Stephanie Turselli. I don't live here, but I've had the privilege of working here for a little more than a decade. I didn't intend on getting up and speaking this evening, however, following all these presentations, I did feel compelled to say a few things. I don't know if the community is necessarily aware, but the teachers' union has been in what I would describe as somewhat contentious negotiations since February with the board and superintendent, Dr. Goodman and now Mr. Roberts. So much of what we describe as what we love about this community relies a lot on labor that's outside of what we would say are the teachers' contractual terms. The volunteer time, the coming to events, the time after school, the clubs, you know, all of these things really rely so heavily on what we, I think, would call unpaid labor. You know, in my time here, I have worked under, I've been here for 10 years, and I've worked for seven different principals in the middle school and five superintendents. Despite that administrative turnover, I've worked with many of the same colleagues who have all showed up day in and day out to be the steadfast constancy, consistency, constant for our students. So I would just really implore the board to please meet us at contractual terms that reflect the value that you say you have for us. Because as of right now, we do not feel valued in the terms that have been presented to us. So I think the sooner we're able to come to some kind of what I would call a fair understanding, I hope that the district can return to more normalcy, and we can see a lot more of the clubs and activities that rely so heavily on our extra time come back into play. So I would just really appreciate the board to consider that as they continue negotiating with the bargaining units. Thank you.
Hi. Alisa Forgeon, 37 Ridge Street. I have a couple of things, but I'll start out with, I guess, what I think is the most important reason why I'm here. Well, I come anyway, but reason why I'm speaking. Over the summer, I was looking for my son's high, high school class list of things to buy from Staples because I happen to have some spare time, and he assured me there was no list. So I got the Chromebook and started to scroll around through it. And I figured maybe the teachers messaged him, and I went into messages and found some, I would call them disturbing messages from the district surrounding LGBTQ celebrations. And I took pictures of them, and I sent them to some of the board members whose emails that I had. And I just want to remind the district that, you know, you are given the access to our kids, but it has, it comes with a big responsibility. So I would like to get to the bottom of actually finding out where these emails originated from and why my minor child was subjected to them. Because I can assure you that I didn't go into the Chromebook all year, but happened to that particular day. And I'm sure, I'm sure a lot of parents don't check the Chromebook. You know, we trust the district, and we trust that the information and the messages that are coming home are in keeping with our values. And I didn't feel that way when I, after I got through, looking through his Chromebook. So I just would like you to mull that over and maybe do some research as to where those emails came from. The other thing is, is, oh, yeah, the lights in the front of the building. I know I'm going to be a broken record here, but I feel like eventually we have to address this issue. And I know some people inherited this issue, and some people had a front row seat to the issue, and some people have already discussed the issue. But basically, to recap, two of the lights are missing, I believe, at this point. One of them is gone, probably thrown in a dumpster, which is a shame because this is a historic building, and that light fixture is irreplaceable. So now we have the main entrance that has all the light fixtures. We have the left-hand side, which is really the entrance to the middle school once upon a time. I'll call it that. And the old entrance to the cafeteria, which is now being used for special ed, is missing light fixtures that, in my opinion, are going to be very difficult to replace. Because I believe those fixtures are made out of copper, and they've been teened it over the year, years because they're original to the building. So I don't, I don't know that we'll ever be able to replace them, but I would like to start the process of trying to figure that out. I know several board members went looking for extra light fixtures, and, and they weren't found in the basement, or I'm told.
I thought there was one that was found, you know, you don't quote me, but I think there is one still down there.
Okay.
One, I believe, when it had the fire, was totally destroyed. But if we have one, I don't know. Sometimes you can find a company.
I, I've tried to find out more information about this infamous fire, and I've not been able to get.
There was a bird's nest up there, and that's halogen lights, and I guess it just got so hot.
Right, but it's a metal fixture. It should have been rewired. Nobody should have thrown it out. Nobody should have tossed that, even if there was a fire. It, it should have been repaired. It should have been. It shouldn't have been thrown in the garbage.
Yeah, I don't.
I don't, I don't know what kind of fire could have happened that destroyed a metal fixture. It should have been rewired. Yeah. Yeah, because it's, yeah, it's, it's a problem. It's a problem because it really affects the, the front of the building.
And then it's historical structure as well, so.
It's a historical structure, and it's our responsibility. You know, it was hanging up there for decades and decades, and now gone.
Sorry, my mic's not on. Always. We're also looking at how to beautify the, the front of this building, the back of the building. Cottle, right? That's all part of it.
Yeah, I mean, we need to be completely re-landscaped. We need money to re-landscape, but.
But the lights tie into it, right? Because it's the first thing you see on the outside of a building, right?
And they're so beautiful. They're so beautiful, and they're irreplaceable. So we're either going to have to have somebody.
None of us would accept no lights in our house, right? But why do we accept it at our school? So as a board, we will look into that.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? No? Okay. Comments from the board? So.
Yeah, I wanted to say one thing to Mrs. Campagnile, because, you know, my name is mentioned. I did ask that question. So I thank you for that. But on a board's perspective, we do take the recommendation of the superintendent when it comes to hires. The board does not get involved in resumes. When it comes to teachers, special ed, administrators, yes. We are still looking for a directive curriculum, right? We have not settled, nor will we. And I won't let that happen, and this board won't let that happen. We will not settle for someone until we find the right fit. When it comes to the special ed, I asked that question. And, you know, I have my, my thoughts and my feelings on that, and, you know, reading is a big thing for me. It's always been, and I ran my whole campaign on reading. I value someone being, you know, certified in reading, and that's why I asked that question. But I just want to acknowledge the fact and not hide behind it, but I did acknowledge, I did answer, ask that question. But as far as the resumes goes, that's, that's micromanaging when it comes to teachers, which we don't do, right? We take the recommendation of our superintendent, but when it comes to the higher levels, that's when the board gets involved. So just on that standpoint, that's what I wanted to say about that. That's all. Because I'm not saying anything that's, I'm hiding anything because it was a public meeting and I addressed it.
No, 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 and I'm not saying that, and with all due respect, when you have the direct interaction of teachers with our students, I wouldn't call a checks and balances, micromanaging. The last people that need to be micromanaged are the people that are not dealing with our kids every single day. Directors of Curriculum who are sitting in an office, and of course, they spend time with the kids, but not the way the teachers do. So if it's called micromanaging to check a resume of a teacher dealing with students, then micromanage away. There is absolutely no reason why anybody should put their hand on a vote and their word on a vote and approve somebody based on the recommendation of somebody else, just because that person recommended them. And with all due respect, I don't know you. I, I can't trust anything that's, that's coming, because right now I don't trust anything. Now, now I'm completely at a loss after what has gone, gone, what has gone through with my child since kindergarten, kindergarten in this district. Why I'm even here, I don't even know. I should have pulled her out a long time ago. But I pay enough money in taxes that I expect this board to micromanage the teachers. We pay them a very decent salary because we want them to be experienced. We don't just hire anybody. This school is better than that. The teachers that are sitting back there are better than that. And nobody should be hired if they're not experienced.
Can I say something else? Karen just made me want to come up here and, and tell you all that I understand her, her frustration and her pain and her agony. She's not the first parent who has been let down by the special ed department in this school for many years. So what I implore you to do is something that I had a conversation with Mr. Marash. I had a conversation with Mr. Keo. I had a conversation with Mr. Kilgallen. We had a meeting, and what I implore you to do is to get your teachers, all these teachers from pre-K to third grade, and have them trained in the science of reading, and then look at your middle school teachers because lord knows, half the kids in middle school aren't reading on grade level, almost half. It's the truth. So the science of reading is a method that's been proven by data. It's an explicit way of teaching reading very quickly, and it has helped Mississippi become number 50 in the state. And it's, it's already in the middle of the pack. So I'm imploring you to grab these teachers and train them in the science of reading, and then get a program. I brought the program over to the, to coach, to all the people that I mentioned. It's called Reading Roadmap. It lets you see exactly what the teachers are teaching these kids in very small, tiny fragments of reading, writing, and spelling, and everybody's doing it at the same time. So I'm just saying that I understand her pain.
Any other board comments?
I have a couple. So a couple of things. One is regarding the special education department. If I would have, if your email would have said, Mrs. Halloran, I would have responded to you in a heartbeat. If I didn't respond, because I did not respond, because I am not an educator, and I believed it was the right place for the superintendent to respond to the email. Special education and its failure is near and dear to my heart. I have a child who is now 27 who still struggles. There are teachers in this room who can tell you what her struggles were throughout growing up. She is a child who fell through the cracks. So believe me when I tell you that I understand your pain. I have been there. I am still there. She is in grad school, and we are still dealing with this issue. I understand. But, and I understand why you feel that we should micromanage, but we shouldn't. New York State School Board will tell you it is not our role as school board members to micromanage and to, to second guess and to look that deep into teacher hiring. It is just not the role of a board member. I would like to know the policy that you're referring to that states the specific requirements for special education teachers, and we will look more into it. Policy is our role, and if we didn't follow the policy, that is something that we will look into.
I'm not aware of what policy you're talking about. I think, I think maybe you're.
That every reading teacher or ELA teacher in special education would have a literacy certification.
Was, but was that a discussion or a stated verbal goal, or was it an actual policy? I don't think it was an actual policy. I'm not aware of any policy that, like that. So I'm not sure if you're just using the wrong term. I'm not trying to be argumentative, but.
If I recall correctly, and I'm going to have to start looking at it myself and go back to all the meetings on video, that if I recall correctly, at the time, it was Dr. Sweeney, and they put it into effect because of the poor reading scores. There were kids in sophomore year, junior year, and senior year that did not read well.
I, I don't doubt that it was discussed.
So that was put into place to make sure that any future hires would have the literacy certification. And any current hires that didn't have it would be training.
Okay. Again, not trying, not trying to be argumentative, and this is not the way. Just hold on. This is not how we're supposed to be doing this. This is not fair to people at home also, and we're not supposed to be having discussion like this, but whatever. I'm not being argumentative with you. I'm not doubting that it was discussed in a meeting, maybe stated as an aim or a goal, but it, it was not a policy. The policy is a very different thing, and I'm, I'm not trying to be argumentative with you. But a policy is something that we pass on paper. We do three readings. We vote on it. That's not something we did in a policy. So again, you're not wrong, you may not be wrong about the fact that it was discussed, and it was something that was stated as a, as a goal or a bar that we wanted to get to. I don't remember specifically what you're talking about, but I'm not doubting it, but it was not, it was not a policy. I just want to be clear about that.
You're certain it wasn't?
I'm pretty certain, yeah, yeah. And if I'm wrong, please bring it to my attention. But I do not think it was a policy in board docs in our policy library. I think that's what you're referring to, and that's not the case.
Karen, if it's, if it's.
All right. Well, again, Karen, I'm sorry, but this is not the for, this is not how we do this. And, and we're not even supposed to be going back and forth at the podium, quite frankly. It's comment period, not, not debate or discussion period. I'm happy to talk to you afterwards on the side or you want to call, happy to do that, one-on-one if you like, no problem. This is, this is not the forum for this, or how we, how we're supposed to do this. Okay, I'm sorry.
My last comment is just regarding the TTA and the negotiation. I appreciate you coming tonight and sharing your perspective. I appreciate your, your right to do so. I appreciate your dedication to the district. As I have said many times, many, many, many times, the number one goal of this board is to settle all three contracts. There is nothing else that we want than to settle the contract. We respect your right to advocate completely, but you have to understand that as a board, our duty is to secure a contract that is both fair for educators and fiscally responsible to our taxpayers who fund the school. From your perspective, it's easy. Just give us an increase. From ours, it's hard because we want to do that. We want to give you the most we can, but we also have to make sure that we hold the district fiscally healthy and accountable to the taxpayers. It is not that we do not care at all. It is not that we do not respect you at all. It is not that we do not respect you at all. We absolutely do. And we have been consistently negotiating since, for months now, but even more so since the first of school. I instructed the superintendent to please come up with other ways to try to settle the contract when we seem to have been at a stalemate. We attended, I, I had a private meeting with your union president to try to clear the air a little bit, to have a more amicable relationship. I, you know, we, we've been sitting at meetings, we've been actively negotiating back and forth for a few weeks now. So I don't want the community to think that we are just sitting back and not doing anything. The board is really trying. We are negotiating in good faith. We are, we've, we've put in a lot of hours for this and we appreciate the teachers and the amount of time that they have put in, and the amount of time that they put into our students. We know that our children are their babies for over six hours of the day and often go into the night in their thoughts and in how they can support our kids. But as a board, we have to make sure that we are making a financially sound agreement. Each time that we've negotiated, we have, it's, it's upsetting to me when I have teachers say to me, "Do you just not want to give us a raise?" Because nothing could be further from the truth, nothing. Each time that we have come and made an offer, there has been an increase in it. And just so that the community knows, even while we are in, we are without a contract and we are in Tri-Borough, the teachers who are still on the scale did still move up their step and did still see an increase from where their paycheck was. Longevity, not so much. But if you were, let's say you were on step six last year, you did move up to six, step seven and there was an increase in that number. It's just that the whole contract, the whole scale, has not increased to a certain amount. So it is an end, end, when everything does get settled, we are expecting to give retroactive paychecks. So while they are working without a contract right now, when everything does get settled, they will get the money that they deserve from the beginning of the school year until whenever it gets settled. We absolutely want this to get done and want it to get done quickly. No doubt about it. We absolutely want to give you a fair contract, but we do have to do it with the consciousness of the taxpayer and our school health financially involved. The teacher's contract is 80% of our budget. It's a big number to not really think about what we're, what we're putting into place. And, and it's, you know, a, a three to four-year commitment. It's a big commitment also. It's not just talking about this year, it's a three to four-year commitment. And that's, that's how we feel. I'm, I'm sorry that you guys think otherwise. It has nothing to do with the respect or the want, absolutely nothing.
Can I, can I just add to that a little bit? I think, everything that Allison said I completely agree with. And absolute respect to teachers and, and I think, I think that is reflected in the value of the contract that we've sustained throughout the years with our teachers. I think our, so I've been on this board now for nine years. I feel like this teacher's contract has always been very competitive, very high up in terms of its value across the board and that's reflective of our commitment and our, and our appreciation of the teachers and acknowledging how important they are. I think that's just a very important point to make because I think that's the sentiment is that we don't respect the teachers or we're not, we're not giving a fair contract. I think that's completely inaccurate. And yes, we are all working hard to get to a, to a point where we could, you know, settle this contract. But a couple of points that were made that I thought were really important to double down on is for the community to know, and Allison touched on it, I think is really important. This stuff is very, by, by the way, this stuff is very complicated. It's very confusing, it's very hard to follow, there's a lot of different parts to it. There's obviously the salary, which everyone knows and we talk about percentages of increases, but there's more to it than the salary. There's other components of, of benefits to the contract that are also very much, very important and cost money and are benefits to the teachers. And some of those are healthcare contributions, how much we contribute to their healthcare insurance versus they contribute to their healthcare insurance. There's retirement health benefits, how much we reimburse for Medicaid contributions. There's, there's longevity pay, there's all sorts of other aspects to the contract that matter. So, and we're talking about respect and I'm being disrespected right now, so that's, that's really, really great. And, and the other thing I, I heard also in your comments, Mr. Selly, is that, that I wanted to address is I can appreciate what you guys are trying to do. What I don't appreciate though, and I think I heard, if I heard you correctly, is that is there's an intentional abstination from clubs going on? I, I think that's what you said, I'm not sure if I heard you correctly. If you, if I, if I said it wrong, yeah.
Again, no, this is not the forum for back and forth, but I just do want to clarify. No, that's not what I was saying.
Okay.
What I was saying is, is that so much of all these extras in the district rely on teachers volunteering.
Okay.
Many, many, many additional hours. And I appreciate that you are saying that you respect us and value us. What I'm trying to convey is that in speaking for many bargaining members, we don't feel that communicated. So clearly there is a disconnect, but our feelings are real and valid-
Absolutely.
And they're grounded in experience. So that's the sentiment that we currently feel. So I don't necessarily appreciate you saying that, you know, it's not right that we feel that way.
I, I didn't say that. I, I did not say that.
Okay, that's how I took it.
Okay.
In what you were saying.
I did not say those words. What, what I was addressing with you is I, I think you said, I thought you said the first time I came up here that if we settle the contract, the clubs and we'll come back. I don't know, did I misunderstand that?
What I was trying to say is that so much of what we do relies on extra volunteer work beyond the scope of our contract.
Right, but you specifically said clubs, did you not?
I did specifically say clubs.
Clubs, clubs are not volunteer, clubs, the clubs are paid for.
But you have to volunteer for the stipend.
No, I understand that, but, but they're not volunteering, you're, you're not, they're not uncompensated volunteer time.
They're not completely uncompensated, no.
All right. That's the only point I was trying to make.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Anyway.
Thank you.
I'll just finish my thought. My thought is, and I'm not trying to be contentious here at all, I'm trying to say that for the years I've been on this board, I think our appreciation as boards collected this board, previous board, previous board to that, our, our demonstration of our appreciation is in the strength of the contract that we've given over the years. Our contract, if you look at all the different components of it, is, stacks up to almost any other districts. We're, we're top flight in, we're top five, five or six percent in salary, we have the, almost the second highest, and after our proposal will be the highest longevity pay that any district gives in, in the county. We have the, we require the lowest contributions or very low contributions to healthcare insurance compared to our counterparts. And the offer that's on the table is, is higher than what other districts around us have gotten. So in every way, we're demonstrating through action how we care about the teachers and how we respect the teachers. So it's not words, it's actions. It's actions in the form of the current contract and it's actions in form of the contracts that, the contract that's been proposed. I think it's just a very important point to make. We definitely want to get this settled, without a doubt. And there was another point I wanted to make and I forgot. Oh, the other point I just wanted to double down on with, with what Allison said is we do have the responsibility of making sure that whatever contract we settle on is fiscally sustainable. That's very, very important. As I mentioned before, there are other components of the contract besides salary that involve healthcare and healthcare and benefits in retirement. These, everyone knows, healthcare costs are skyrocketing. So our expenses related to, to those parts of the contract are going up significantly. So we're on a path, I'm not trying to be hyperbolic here, but we're on a path that if we were just to accept what the, what the teachers' union is, is, is asking for without some of the concessions that we need in order to make it sustainable, we will put this district on a bad path financially. We'll get to a point where we won't, we'll have to raise taxes just to cover that increase and that's not what we want. We want to keep, we want to maintain our school to be fiscally healthy. There's a lot of benefits to that across the board and it's just important that we do that. So we have to balance wanting to have a competitive and good contract for our teachers that they're happy with and motivates them. And I'm very proud of the fact that our contract is good. I, I'm not complaining about that. I think the fact that we have the fifth best salary in, in the county is a great thing. I'm, I'm proud of that, I want to keep that. But we have to do it in a way that's financially sustainable, that we have, we're tasked, we're looking at five years down the road, 10 years down the road and making sure that this is going to work financially for our district. And that's what we're dealing with and that's what we're trying to come to a resolution.
I'm sorry if you felt offended by the comments. Certainly that was not the intention. The intention was to show that we do support the teachers and, and certainly not validate, not, not invalidating your feelings, but to also show that we have a lot more to think about. It is not just going one direction. We have a lot to think about and we, it just, it's a negotiation. It doesn't just happen overnight. But we have been really, really trying to make a lot of movement, a lot. So I just want to end with that. There was nothing, nothing said that was meant to be offensive and I'm sorry if you took it that way. Comments from the superintendent?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Halloran. So, kind of address a couple of things. I'm, I'm happy, you know, I think I, I've listened to many of the community members, some of the concerns that exist. I'm very happy to have a conversation and talk about hiring practices and, and how the administrative team developed the need that we had this summer, what the required certifications that we had were for, and then how we made our decision based upon the candidates that applied and what we felt was best for our students. I think regardless of, we, we have mutual, to many priorities that when we look at hiring, a lot of it comes down to, we, we have to make sure we have the appropriate certifications. I think this summer in general, we had three different postings we looked for for special education hires, if I recall correctly. We were looking for quite some time for a, three different ones. We had a social studies and special education need, so that was a posting we looked for as a priority. We also looked for a special education and mathematics certification need. Some of those didn't come to fruition, which made us do some internal calculations with current staff this past year. And then lastly, we went, went for a, the last posting that we hired for was a special education certified staff member that also had an ELA background. And that was based upon the recommendations of the high school administration, the special education needs that existed in the building, and that's what we looked in canvas for when we posted on OLS, looked for candidates and then went through our hiring procedures. And as the passion came through with many of our community members today, I also have a passion for literacy. That's the first question I ask any teacher, whether it's a chemistry teacher, whether it's an elementary teacher, is how do you teach reading? How is reading important into your classroom, not just the content knowledge? So, you know, I think for many times, even at a secondary level, reading is the, the most pivotal piece for some students because if they can't read and comprehend the curriculum, then they're going to struggle with it. So making sure that all of our educators are knowledgeable in teaching reading pedagogy, have a full understanding of assessments of reading and that can effectively teach reading strategies in their content, whether it's a high school 12th grade class or whether it's a kindergarten class. Those are, those are priorities for education for me and I believe for, for all educators should have a focus on reading ability. I think it's a huge impetus for, for students that struggle with reading to be successful in certain courses. So having the right educators to know how to navigate those and get students to where they need to be is a priority. So that's one thing, but again, I, I'm glad to have a, a conversation with yourself, Mr. Fiore, to talk about what your child may need currently, any instructional needs that you feel that they're lacking or in need of. Those are conversations that I think we definitely could have. But in terms of the process and, and I'm happy to also look into if a policy does exist. I don't believe there is. Again, when we're looking for different, to fill different needs within a complex high school schedule, we do look for multiple certifications and how do we meet those needs? When teachers have to co-teach, when you need to have a secondary certification within? So multiple certifications is always a priority, but also as, as was a priority and said here and I just mentioned, the literacy, knowledge and expertise in, in what we teach is a priority for, for the hiring piece. But happy to have a, an individual conversation. I can schedule a time with the administration, myself, and we can talk about any concerns that you have and, and what any needs that your child may have to make sure that they're being successful this year. I will definitely look into the light situation. That's a learning project for me to see what that exists. I think we have a beautiful building, we do want to maintain it to the best of our ability and make sure that we do it justice, keeping the, the unique features that make it such a historical building that it is and, and to make sure that we're, again, the, the five-year facility plan in addition to that stuff I brought up today, that our parking lots and, and front of the, the beautification of the front, as trustee Bogetti talked about, those are all priorities of the board. Making sure that our school and our, and our resources and our facilities are bar none world-class. And where they're not, we need to get better. And I think that's what, that's a commitment of this board and it'll be a commitment and under my superintendency of, let's make sure that we're doing everything we can to give our students and teachers and staff here the best work and learning environment, Westchester County, New York State, wherever it is, that there's no reason to have second best, you know, from, from that aspect. The, the policy, again, I'm glad I got to speak a little bit about that, but I'm excited for students that can take advantage of it. As we look for it, those challenges that exist in the building came up in the committee of how do we make sure that it's, it's really successful for all the students? You know, and then that's why the pilot is going to come in place so that we can hopefully get information from this program, how many students are impacted, and then from there, make a great policy that we can then recommend to the board moving forward and, and work out the kinks of, of what works here at Tuckahoe. Because we are a little different than some of the other school districts based upon our size. Again, the small nature is unique, but sometimes it creates challenges with supervision and space and we got to make sure that we can fully maintain a policy that we would put before the board so it doesn't create operational challenges. So I look forward to that feedback and hopefully it is a great thing that, and I need our varsity athletes to take advantage of and hopefully down the road can eventually take additional coursework if it opens up other opportunities for them. You know, some may want to take other courses and that's another piece of other electives that we could offer that they weren't able to take because they already had a full schedule. So I think that's a great flexible opportunity for, for them. In terms of the negotiations, and I know it was mentioned, and I wish we had more people to, to hear my comments at this point, but, you know, I think it's, I don't find this as a contentious negotiation. I've been a part of it coming in since July. I think we've had several meetings and, and conversations about how to move forward. Both sides have been professional, we're working forward on a positive resolution. Negotiations can be tough. I've been a part of 10 different contracts in my previous situations and again, as, as the trustees said, our obligation is to create a fair and appropriate contract for all of our units, but also to make sure that it's financially sustainable for our district. We, we can't do one thing today and then have to look at programs down the road and say that we can't support student needs or programs because of unsupported costs. And that's just something we have to be very deliberate about, very intentional and make sure that we're offering fair and reasonable contracts that are going to be good for our employees to feel taken care of here at Tuckahoe, but that sustainability piece is just as important. And that's the, that's the fiduciary responsibility for our community and for taxpayers and for our students so that we can be great with our programs moving forward for that. So that's it for, for my comments from there, but initially I just really look forward to the other great things that are happening here at Tuckahoe. The, as mentioned by PTA, the Halloween event and the PTA family parent night out all sound like wonderful events. Please go and enjoy those and be a part of those for our community if you're watching. Try to, to attend or support the PTA. They do a tremendous amount for us here at Tuckahoe. We have PSATs coming up for our high schoolers, I think, believe next weekend, so we'll make sure that's communicated out and that students should already be signed up for those things. And look for another, another, another great week with our students this upcoming week as we move into November, can't believe it. Last thing I would say, if, if, take advantage of the extra, extra support. Our teachers do have extra support, six through 12, once or twice a week. So if your child's not taking advantage of that, please encourage them to the after-school bus and, and get that extra time with their, with their teachers. That's one of the great benefits that we do have here at Tuckahoe. Not every school district offers that and I would definitely encourage parents to make sure that if your child needs extra help, get there, get that small group attention and that really will help to benefit them with meeting those instructional goals and achievement levels we want to see them succeed with. All right, that concludes it, men and present, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Motion to adjourn the meeting. Jill, second, Pete, all in favor? Good night, everybody. Thank you. Thank you for sticking it out.